Okay, this Cleveland Heights City Council meeting is called to order. It is Monday, April 7th at 7:46. Eddie, would you call the roll?
Posh.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Kuda.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
All right, no absent members, no amendments to the agenda, no approval of minutes, no city administrators' report. We've got a lot of those here, but we do have a departmental report from the mayor's Action Center Coordinator, Todd Walburn. There he is. Welcome.
Thank you, Council President Kuda, Vice President Russell, council members and Mayor Sarin. Thank you. Is it on? Okay.
You lift it up a little.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight about the Mayor's Action Center. My name is Todd Walburn. I'm the Mayor's Action Center Coordinator. I was hired just over a year ago as the Mayor's Action Center Coordinator, and at that time I spoke with you about what my job entailed and how I plan to use the tools available to me to assist in implementing cities, improving city services, answer resident questions and concerns, and provide feedback to city departments on the effectiveness and efficiency of their processes. At that time, we had just begun to use the Access Cleveland Heights application to report process requests. The statistics reported in the city administrators' report in June 2024 include a total of 208 total requests in the Access Cleveland Heights platform, including 103 private residential property requests, 27 potholes, and 13 forestry requests, reported by a total of 169 active Today, less than a year later, we have over 1,000 registered residents who have reported a total of 3,432 requests, including 577 potholes, 720 private residential property requests, 242 forestry requests, and 137 city sewer requests. But these numbers only tell a part of the story. Last autumn, I worked with our performance coordinator Andrea Heim and city directors and chiefs to establish preliminary service-level agreements for requests at each department. These goals are meant to provide a timeframe for completion of each request: two days for potholes, five days for graffiti, two days for forestry, for example. In January, we began reporting on the results of these measurements. The results of these reports provide information to department directors, including the effectiveness of their staffing levels, seasonal trends, staff efficiency, and process adherence. It translates anecdotal information into measurable results, and I have received positive impact from the directors on these reports. We have also adapted some processes based on the information provided by them. As many of you on council know, by providing me with your personal requests or reporting requests on behalf of city residents, Access Cleveland Heights is not a solution. It is a tool. The solution lies in looking beyond the app, listening to residents, linking residents to appropriate staff, and communicating with people in the way that works best for them. The MAC continues to take requests via phone, email, or through the Access Cleveland Heights app. Phone and email requests are entered by myself or another city staff member so we can capture as much data as possible, but many of these requests require follow-up clarification and explanation. This is not about opening and closing, but about communicating and resolving. I often say that I like to be able to answer people's questions before they have a chance to ask. In other words, provide education and information upfront to properly manage people's expectations. To that end, I am working with our communications department, not only to increase the number of residents who report requests and concerns, but also to explain city processes to residents so they better understand why things happen a certain way. It also provides an opportunity for residents to share their frustrations as well as gratitude to someone who is listening. As we continue to move forward, we'll be looking at the collected data in June and revising our service-level agreements to see if they need to be adjusted, discuss whether we need to add request categories, and find new ways to increase awareness of the MAC for more residents. People often ask me if the MAC is growing too fast for me to keep up. Fortunately, with every incremental increase in usage of the app, there has been matching increase in efficiency with the process. As a Cleveland Heights resident myself, I want the same things we all want. I would like to thank all of the residents who have taken the time to reach out and share their concerns with me over the past year. You all have made an impact on maintaining a thriving, safe, and dynamic Cleveland Heights. I did have some reports I wanted to show you real quick, if we have time. So this is kind of just a sample of the reporting that we get through Access Cleveland Heights. These are reports that I pull from the actual reporting and kind of clean it up a little bit so it's easier for folks to read. So I have the June through December of 2024. This is just all the way down, all the different categories that we measure, how many requests in each category, and then I pull that information over to this chart here so we can get a breakdown of each department, how many requests for each department per month, then translate that into a chart that's a little bit easier to take in, and this just records the total number of users that are using the platform each month, starting in June of last year, and then all that information goes through March of this year. So this tells us... So I was talking about service-level agreement. That's the number of days that we're assigned for things to take to get completed. We're just now working on getting those service-level agreement reports, starting to really dig into them and see how we're doing, but just to kind of give you an idea of how things work, and I'll go with the... So go with the total here. 193 created requests for Public Works for this time period. This is, I think, January. No, it's probably... This is February. So there are 193 created, 104 acknowledged. 117 of those 193 were closed within the time period. Days to acknowledge was less than a day before somebody acknowledged the request. Days to close, 2.6 days. This is usually the assigned number of days we have for each request to complete service-level agreement, so 65% of the reports were in the service-level agreement time period. So that is that. And that's something that I'm going to keep looking at and figuring out. Are we allowing enough time for people to complete their requests? Do we need more staff to complete requests in a certain department? How are the directors? The directors are watching all this in real time and talking to people, so these are all the things that we can pull from See Click Fix and help us move forward and do more things. It also gives us an opportunity to look at how people are interacting with the app. It records how people are, whether they're going through their iPhone, their Google phone, their web screen, the website. There's a lot of different ways this breaks it down for us, and I can also, if anybody wants a report of a certain thing, I can also work on getting those kind of reports provided if somebody wants to know something specific. So that's all I've got, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple of quick things. Your phone number is? And if people want to email you?
It's mac@clevelandheights.gov.
Okay, mac@clevelandheights. You've got to spell it out. At...dot gov, sorry. And where would you...how would you report a pothole other than calling you?
So you can either send me an email, or you can go to the Access Cleveland Heights app. If you don't have the app already, you can go on the App Store and just search for Access Cleveland Heights, download the app, and it's a very easy process of you select pothole location, then select pothole, then select a description of where the pothole is and how it affected your ride or whatever. I've had people request claim forms through the app if they have damage to their car, and then they just click Send. They can also do that on the website if they go to the main website and go to the Mayor's Action Center link on the website. There's a page on there that you can actually do it without the app. You can do it on your computer without having to use the app.
Okay, that's really good to know. And then bulk pickup violations, when people put stuff out and it's not the week to put it out. Same process, use the app and the...
Yeah, so just to clarify a little bit, bulk pickup, I actually have them all assigned to me now because there was some confusion about, oh, I put my bulk pickup out and it didn't get picked up, or my neighbors have had their bulk pickup out for three weeks and nobody's doing anything. So all those get assigned to me until I figure out where that goes. So yeah, once again, if bulk pickup, that is like your own bulk pickup, you can put it under that category, but if it is something about your neighbors had their bulk pickup out for way too long, that would go under a private residential property request. So we would have to go send an inspector out and note the violation to get the homeowner and then have the trash removed if it does.
Very good. Any other guests? Councilwoman Larson.
Todd, I have to say thank you. You're doing a fabulous job. Your responsiveness, your communication, the follow-up that we get back and forth on some of those more problematic complaints has just been amazing, and so I'm very glad that you're here as a city employee. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, Councilwoman...I'm sorry, Councilwoman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Todd, thank you so much for taking time to present this with us this evening. I loved seeing the growth in the number of users on the app. I use it. It's very convenient. I'm really grateful that our city has it. I'm happy to hear that you've worked with Andrea to measure the response times and set SLAs. I think that that's great, and you already know it, but so that other folks know, we periodically get copied on emails where people are just so grateful for what Todd does here in the city, and so he is a real compliment to the mayor and a really good face for our city government, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Posh?
I also wanted to say thank you. I mean, many people in the community think you could reach out to a council person to like fix a pothole, but it's not in our realm, and it's administrative stuff. When I particularly forward those to you, I mean, you are always on it, and I just can't tell you...I appreciate it. I know our residents appreciate it. You do such a great job, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Cobb?
Let me join all the other council members. I try to thank you all the time when you take care of these problems, and the one thing that I really appreciate is that you often follow up with the resident and then get back and let me know what the resolution was and you're working on it, and it really is...you've been a great asset and addition to this city, so personally, I'm thanking you again. I'll continue to try and do it in my email responses to you.
Thank you.
Vice President Russell?
Yes, I also want to thank you as well. What I really love is that you also copy me on any complaints that someone has...I've sent to you. Also, can you answer a question for me? And I'm not sure, because I want the public to know. I got a lot of complaints, and I've told people to go to the Action Center, but it's more about commercial, I guess, bulk or trash. Rudy's...what is that? Rudy's Pub has this dumpster that's on the side of their building that's always full. They're always calling the city. There's another place right on Mayfield behind the Cultures. It's a dumpster back there in a field that keeps getting...where do they go? What do they do?
There's a commercial property request category in the app as well, yeah.
Okay.
But if anybody's ever not sure where to put something, just send me an email or give me a phone call.
Okay.
Yeah, but if that's be a private commercial property request, I would go to the Building Department to follow up.
All right. And if a person keeps doing that, is there a violation or something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's a whole process the Housing Department goes through for violations like that.
Okay. I hope the people who are emailing me are listening to you today. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
All right, well, again, thank you for coming, and you know you're doing a good job when people cannot imagine how we ever serviced complaints without you, and so thank you again and appreciate the report.
Thank you. I enjoy it very much. I have a good time at work every day, even...today, I'm going to tell you a really quick story briefly. Today, I was asked to come out for a resident that was in the lobby, and she was there to complain about a neighbor of hers, and as we were talking, it came out that she had an issue with her roof, and she couldn't afford to get her roof fixed, and so I was able to hook her up with the Housing Assistance Program, and she had no idea that even existed. So a lot of times when I'm dealing with one thing, something else comes up, and so it's a great opportunity to do some good stuff, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you all.
All righty, thank you.
Wish my mom was here today.
All right. Director Zamp. You can...by the...you know, wait until the applause dies down and then you can...
Can I praise Todd as well? Because I think he does a tremendous job. It's great to have actually a captive audience here. Just wanted to go over some of the updates. We're trying to do this on a monthly basis to give you an idea of where we're at with various planning and development projects and initiatives. And just starting out with...hey, okay. With transportation planning, which is something that is going to be on your agenda tonight, we've been doing a lot of planning over the past year, year and a half, and added this sort of subtitle here, From Planning to Action. So the goal in 2025 is to take those plans, which you've adopted or will adopt hopefully tonight, and start to put that into implementation through funding and through actual projects. And so that includes things on South Taylor, looking at the Complete and Green Streets Ordinance, which is award-winning but not necessarily fully implemented, and ways to collaborate with the Transportation Mobility Committee to make sure that there are ways that that can be implemented and be more actionable moving forward. Our Livable Neighborhoods Initiative, which is really looking at zoning in our residential neighborhoods, a bunch of components here. I won't spend too much time on it, but the big things that we're looking at now is studying accessory dwelling units, Places of Worship, which is actually something that's on your agenda tonight. We're looking at a housing needs assessment, issuing that RFP, residential typologies, i.e., tiny homes. We'll do an RFP to be issued later in the year. And other zoning, Critics, which is our public-facing zoning platform, a contract is on tonight, and we hope to really promote that even more so. And then we have to look at our sign ordinance because, no, it's very much out of date. Development updates, some of this folks know and others should be new information. So Lancashire Senior Housing, that is something that was approved by council a little while back earlier this year, and they've applied for historic...they've applied for low-income housing tax credits from the state. They hope to hear usually in June, and after that, we'll present to you what that next timeline would be, including additional community engagement. Park Synagogue, there's an agenda item on tonight. There might be folks in the audience wishing to speak on that, but that's the zoning map change. And then the second step B of that would be a development plan and design guidelines, and then individual approvals would follow after that. Severance Impact, which is the master developer, will be in town for the next meeting, and I think the intention is to get an update from Ryan Porter at that meeting, including a concept plan that they have developed. There was a meeting at the Noble Library, really focused on the Noble community, on the 25th of March, and it was well-attended. There's a city website. There's a project crowdsourcing website that Impact has. The Recommended Action Plan, which is sort of due diligence to date, and a market study have been posted, and there's a potential update to the school board in May. Their April schedule didn't work out for that lining up with your meetings. And then RFEIs, which are how we're dealing with our city-owned vacant lots and city-owned properties. We hope to begin that at the next meeting with some formal actions. Neighborhood planning, we've, of course, last year spent a lot of time on Noble Road, and there's some follow-up activities that are happening this year. Streetscape Designs, including some upcoming meetings with businesses, and then later this month, on the 29th, will be a public discussion about Streetscape on the Noble Road corridor. A market study is in preparation. We're drafting the plan, including creating an implementation metrics with the idea of getting people to weigh in on those suggested implementation items and prioritizing them. And then we want to have a bunch of meetings to really push the plan out, and of course, the Planning and Development Committee has been working on a merchants' association, which I think is called the Noble Merchants Alliance, and so more to come on that. Taylor Road, there'll be some similar activities a little bit later in the year. There's also that Road Diet, which is where we have some funding to help calm traffic on South Taylor Road, and they too are exploring a city or a merchants' association. And North Coventry, we had started doing neighborhood planning last year. There's a draft plan that we have from our consultant and want to look at that closely, but the idea is to get that out before the midpoint of the year so that there could be eligible activities through CDBG, and there are a number of city-owned properties in the North Coventry area that this plan will hopefully inform the recommendations we would make about having infill housing. Landmark Commission, most important thing here is that 50th anniversary, really, it's going to be the 52nd anniversary, but we're celebrating it this year. It's going to be on May 22nd at the Schoolhouse, and at the same time, they wanted to start to talk about some changes that they're proposing to the landmark ordinance to bring it into our next 50 years. Park planning is ongoing. We've got a consultant team looking at parks, recreation, and open space. They're still doing data collection, particularly in the operations of the community center and Parks and Rec, still thinking about who are the stakeholders, how's community engagement going to work. Dog Park is part of the conversation, and then we've even introduced this new idea of conservation zoning, so how can we start to protect natural resources as part of this park and open space planning. Donestoration, you had the 90% plans presented to you pretty recently, and the bid documents are being created. And finally, Lower Rigs, they are in the pre-design phase. There's just a bunch of other initiatives that wanted to keep everybody apprised of. Gateway and Wayfinding signage, we know that's really important for the community, so stay tuned for that. The Community Improvement Corporation has a meeting this Thursday and every month. And then building and permitting code enforcement, Safe Build Contract is on your agenda for tonight. We're looking at fees. We're looking at the International Maintenance Code, so similar to how we've adopted the Ohio Building Code, we want to look at adopting an international maintenance code, which will really help us do things like when the heat is off by a landlord in a building, there's some stronger mechanisms in there, so we want to potentially propose that to you going forward. And then a facade ordinance is something that we're looking at to prevent facades from falling down and how to deal with those going forward. Grants update, this was something that we got input from you last time, is really here more about this, so generally speaking, we've got a grant writing team that's on your agenda for tonight. We're monitoring all the federal changes, which seem to change every day. We did get the North Taylor Road Diet component with East Cleveland that was awarded by NOACA. What was not awarded was a similar effort that we were looking at to do a Noble Neela Business District Revivalation Plan. That was through the County Planning Commission, and there's a whole bunch of submitted and upcoming opportunities that are listed here. I did just want to note, we're working with the clerk on archiving and document scanning because we know that's a really important thing, and there's just a lot of opportunities here, and we'll continue to keep you updated. And lastly, I won't go through each of these, but you can see in the next month or so, there's a lot of planning-related meetings, the CIC, the ABR, which is the Architectural Board of Review, the CAC, which is the Citizens Advisory Committee, the BZA, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals, Landmark Commission, and the Planning Commission, so it's a full slate, and these are all public meetings that people can attend, and they should look at the city calendar. So we hope to do this every month, and thank you for the time.
Wow, so you don't really have any spare time.
Not really.
Okay. I just want to ask you real quickly, you know, full-played, I understand that, but I would love to hear an ARPA update on the revenue replacement dollar. I know project managers have been hired and so forth, but there are projects I think this council's very interested in hearing about, so maybe the next one.
Absolutely, yep.
Yes, go ahead.
Just while you have the schedule up, I know that many of us know, but could you just let them know there's no Planning Commission meeting this month as well?
Right, you'll notice that the Planning Commission is not listed in the April section. They did not have any applications this month, yep.
All righty, thank you, Director Zamp. I think we should applaud for him, too. I mean, they both worked hard. Mayor, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of things. Director Klink Scale in our Department of Public Works is at a conference right now, and I'm looking forward to her return, but in her absence, I would like to request that the council provide us permission to bid Project 2503, South Taylor and Blanche Sewer Replacement. That would require a motion.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right.
I'd have asked for discussion first, but, sorry.
The last thing that I'd like to at least mention is some of you may have been aware or been impacted by a partial closure of Taylor Road between Washington and Cedar. Of course, you know, this is something that's been endemic for the last several years. There's a lot of roadwork, a lot of infrastructure. It's a necessary evil, and it is the result of a great deal of deferred maintenance and repair to our infrastructure, both in Cleveland Heights and region-wide. That coupled with a great deal of federal assistance over the past few years has led to sort of a lot of work being done. This is no exception. This is a sewer project that we are working on. It should not take, I guess, long. It's relative. Our expectation is that this will be complete by the end of April, and so I just wanted to make people aware, if you need to get northbound on Taylor, you likely will want to detour, either taking Lee to Superior if your car traffic, Mayfield if your truck traffic. And please, if you are taking these detours, be kind to the residents who live on those streets. Don't speed down those streets. Children live there, and adults too, who do not want to be hit by your car, so take it easy, take it slow, and remember, it's better to get there with everyone safe and sound than to get there faster. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Mayor. Report to the council clerk.
Yes, I would like to notify council that I have received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of a D5 liquor permit from In-Non Coventry Restaurant Group LLC, doing businesses in Coventry, to Coventry Hospitality Group LLC. This matter has been referred to the mayor and chief of police.
Thank you, Eddie. Public comment time. How many we have here?
Well, we've got about, I don't know, 16 or 17, one for legislative agenda item, though.
All right, well, let's do it.
Christopher Brace.
Name and street you live on.
Sure. Good evening, folks. My name is Chris Brace. Let's see if I can get this adjusted. My name is Chris Brace. I live on Lennox Road. I'm here tonight to speak about a few of the legislative items on the agenda. I just wanted to continue to support, strongly support, the Park Synagogue rezoning. I know that's on the agenda for tonight, and I would really love to see that passed, and I'm glad to see the support from council. I also wanted to speak in support of Director Zamp's excellent work in the Livable Communities Initiative, both the Place of Worship portion, that is, I believe, either before us tonight or soon to be before us, as well as the broader-scale work around creating full-service communities that really reflect the historical character of our city. As someone who lives in a walkable community and who truly values corner stores, coffee shops, community commercial spaces that create a sense of neighborhood character, seeing that so many of our neighborhoods do not permit this historical and powerful place of community gathering, it saddens me as someone who enjoys that as part of my daily life, and I'm excited to see us returning to, potentially returning to our roots as a, you know, mixed-use and more livable community. I also want to speak to the more difficult issue, and this is, I suppose, more general comment, but we're veering into it anyway. Obviously, there have been a number of recent allegations, which are very serious, and I know that the proposal has been made to take a broader look at the allegations in light of the strong community standing of Dan Horrigan and the seriousness of the allegations that he made and that have been continually made by other members of the community. I know that there is currently an ongoing investigation of an individual matter. I think the allegations of a broader hostile work environment do deserve attention from an independent investigation, ideally one that is supported both by council, which has, you know, legitimate questions on the topic, and by the mayor, who I believe has a strong incentive to see his name cleared, as I believe he does. I hope that there can be some degree of cooperation on this investigation and that we can have a clear answer, untainted by politics. we can have a clear answer, untainted by politics, that assuages any community concerns and ultimately results in greater clarity for everyone involved. That's all I have to say and thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Moving on to general. Alex Gurvich?
My name is Alex Gurvich and I am from Promenade Apartments and edges 2734 Noble Road. And number one, we have laundry room, but we cannot use no electricity. We can't use washer and dryer and dark on this room. And second one, and it starts from December 2023. It was one building was fire and then disconnect electricity from laundry room. It's six building in complex. One of building one in fire. And the second one, from January 23rd, we not receive mail for a whole complex for some restriction for city. And third one, it's main part, I don't have heat from February 25th and it's cold and still don't have heat. Each day they try to find parts, but... And some addition, they changed management, we don't know name of management, we were told a new company, we don't know company and no any connection, no phone number, no name and no resolution for company. Thank you.
So...
Address again?
It's the Promenade. Say it again? All right. Okay, oh, he's got it, all right. Yeah. Council Vice President Russell, I know you know some people with legal aid and it sounds to me like, I mean, I'm listening, no electricity in the laundry room, no mail. I don't think I've ever heard of that. Where a building, are you talking about no mail for the building or just you?
Whole complex.
The whole complex?
Yeah, for some restriction. A post office said that they can broke the rule, deliver mail. When I stopped a couple of times, they not give me any mail.
Okay. And no heat since February 25th? And for some reason, we don't know the name of the new owners or management company?
Both.
Both?
On Thursday, April 3rd, was inspection inside. For management, not for your manager.
Oh, this is, this is a...
Phone number, no.
You just had an inspection and you don't have heat and stuff?
Makes no sense. Well, thank you for putting this on the record and we will absolutely follow up on this. And I see the mayor took your information. All right, Addie, you can call the next person. Sorry about all...
Tom Hudak.
Hi, I'm Tom Hudak, Bradford Road. I'm a former Global Communications Manager, recently retired from Keithley Instruments. I'm here to discuss the article by Mark Apria that I first saw on Cleveland.com and the special meeting of the council that followed. My concern regarding Dan Horrigan's accusations and the follow-up by this council is the complete lack of critical reasoning exhibited by Councilmen Petrus and Pash, as well as by Vice President Russell and President Kuda. Did none of you think it odd that Dan Horrigan, a former Akron mayor, took his complaint to the media? Did none of you find it suspicious that the article contained a photograph taken by one of the mayor's biggest critics, someone who's regularly seen carrying a sign blaming the mayor for everything? Did none of you question whether there was a power differential between the former Akron mayor, Mayor Horrigan, and a woman serving as an unpaid volunteer, a woman who, as the spouse of Mayor Sarin, is in a much more vulnerable position than the former mayor of Akron? No. Councilman Petrus, you went rush to media, to social media before there was even a meeting. Councilman Pash, you, at the meeting that was held, you cross-examined our mayor and the city's legal counsel in the most accusatory manner possible, yet you never questioned the lack of evidence offered by Mayor Horrigan. And Vice President Russell and President Kuda, you both alluded with no substantiation to quote other complaints without saying what, how many, let alone by whom. The citizens of Cleveland Heights voted for an elected mayor. Unfortunately, under your leadership, and I'm talking about the four of you, you seem determined to undermine the office of the mayor. You are not the mayor, you are not the operations manager of the city, you are council people. Learn to stay in your lane. Thank you.
Travis Filiki?
My name is Travis Filiki. I live on Berkeley Road. The cost of nearly everything is going up and First Energy wants to make our electric bills more expensive too. But city council can do something. I asked city council to pass a resolution opposing the proposal from First Energy to increase electric rates for Cleveland Heights residents. First Energy subsidiary, The Illuminating Company, provides electric distribution service to Cleveland Heights residents. First Energy's request is pending before the Ohio Utility Regulator, the Public Utilities Commission. The PUCO will decide what rates we pay. Last month, the average electric bill cost about $161. First Energy wants to make the average electric bill more expensive by $13 each month. The proposed increase would generate $190 million for First Energy. This proposal would increase the fixed costs on our bill, which means we can't avoid this rate increase if we curb our usage. It's a cost charged to all of us, even if we change to LED bulbs or turn off our air conditioner. First Energy told its investors that this is a modest request, but council needs to tell First Energy and the PUCO that $190 million is not modest for Cleveland Heights residents. On our electric bill, First Energy already charges dozens of riders in junk fees. And First Energy is not the only utility company trying to raise rates. Enbridge wants to increase rates by $13 too and add a new rider on top. So if Enbridge and First Energy got the increases they want, we would pay $400 a year for our gas and electric service. But council can do something about our utility bills. First, council can speak out against the proposed rate increase and oppose this proposal in a resolution. The resolution should be submitted to the PUCO, which will review it before it makes a final decision. Second, the city should encourage other cities to pass resolutions too. As of this morning, only two others have and this is not enough. Third, council members in their personal capacity can submit their own public comments. All First Energy consumers and everyone here can submit a public comment and send them to the PUCO online at their website, puco.ohio.gov. The case number for this First Energy case is 240468ELAIR. Thank you for your consideration.
James DeBistill?
Jim Nemestill, 2930 Edge Hill Road. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Members of the Council, Mayor Sarin. The mayor of the City of Cleveland Heights recently entered into a contract to perform a satisfactory survey of residents of the City of Cleveland Heights. The cost of this survey was just shy of $50,000. I personally have not been surveyed by anyone yet. I have, however, conducted my own survey. Granted, my survey certainly cannot be considered a professional survey as it was not conducted by a cadre of highly-paid psychologists and consultants, but I serious believe it sheds lights on and fairly reflects a satisfactory level many residents of Cleveland Heights have regarding how the city is being run. The most notable survey questions will follow. How satisfied are you regarding the negative press Cleveland Heights is getting due to three administrators quitting within three years? Majority respondents answered very unsatisfied. How satisfied are you that it has been reported in the news that a non-city employee and a relative of an elected member of city administration has been prowling through the corridors and attending closed-door government meetings at City Hall? This question, incidentally, received the highest negative rating with a majority responding highly unsatisfied. And a follow-up question, how satisfied are you that taxpayers' money is being spent to investigate a non-city employee who has been coming to City Hall and has been wearing a city employee badge and has made city employees feel uncomfortable and intimidated? Answer, very unsatisfied. Next question, are you satisfied with the fact that the city administration was unable to develop a comprehensive and complete budget in a timely fashion? Most respondents answered very unsatisfied. Next question, overall, are you satisfied with the current administration's ability to effectively run the city? Most answered, very unsatisfied. Things are not going well in our city. We are the laughingstock of northeast Ohio. I am speechless when people from other cities ask in disbelief, what is happening in your city? So where do we go from here? In my mind and probably in the minds of many citizens of Cleveland Heights, there is only one clear path that needs to be taken. Mayor Sarin, if you have a sense of self-dignity left and you truly believe in the positive and prosperous future of this city, it's time for you to step down. Thank you very much.
Adam May?
Good evening, Adam May, Compton Road. I was struck by something that Councilman Pash said at last week's special meeting. It was really tough to watch, honestly, but he said that we're all laughing at you and that seems to be echoed here. But I livestreamed the meeting just before this and I saw a group of people working together, compromising, navigating the challenges of your positions, being severely undercompensated for what you guys do, and I saw everybody getting along just fine. All the back-and-forth fighting, all the he-said, she-said stuff, all the legal battles, the claims of hostile work environments, frankly, it's irrelevant to me because the one thing that is abundantly clear is that few people who have worked with this mayor have spoken highly of their experience. That's the bottom line. Few people want to follow his leadership, few people view him as an effective manager. We're not laughing at you, we're disappointed, we deserve better. So I'm here to plead with the mayor for the last seven months of your term to please put your head down, compromise, work with these people and others in your administration as a unified leadership team for the benefit of all the citizens of this great city. That's it. Thanks.
Morgan McKay?
My name is Morgan McKay. I live on Hampshire Road. I am a resident here in Cleveland Heights and a tenant, and I'm also a housing attorney at the Legal Aid Society of Cleveland, where I represent tenants right here in Cleveland Heights Municipal Court. And I came to speak a little bit about the Lead Safe Ordinance that council passed back in 2022. Back in 2022, council passed, or became the first suburb in Chayga County to pass a Lead Safe Ordinance, following in the City of Cleveland's footsteps. As part of that ordinance, residential owners of rental units are required to file Lead Safe certifications with the city on a specific schedule. That ordinance was amended, I believe, in 2023 to push back the start date of that. And as part of the ordinance, there also was to be a Lead Safe Advisory Board that was to be formed. I applied April of 2024 when I saw applications open for a position to be appointed onto the board. I was excited, both as a tenant here myself and as a attorney at the Legal Aid Society of Cleveland, where I've heard tenants in both Cleveland Heights and elsewhere complain about their children having elevated blood levels. Eventually, I was asked to do a mayoral interview with council and the mayor, and I was eventually appointed onto the Lead Safe Advisory Board in October of 2024. Since then, I've been trying to follow up and get some clarity as to what the next steps are. This Lead Safe Advisory Board is to consist of the mayor or their designee, a city council member, and then five appointed members. I believe only one other member has been appointed so far and I'd really like to get this board sort of up and running. I know that the city did release, or had a press release from, I believe, earlier in March, which talked about finally sending notification out to landlords that they were to file their Lead Safe certifications by a specific date, I believe July 1st, 2025, but this is sort of three years in the making. And as we know, the risks of lead levels or elevated blood levels in children is incredibly detrimental to their health. It can cause brain damage, it can cause damage to the nervous system, delays in growth, behavioral problems, hearing and speech difficulties. And there's no safe lead level in the blood of children. It primarily affects children who are under the age of six. We do have a large population of children in Cleveland Heights and I would just like to see a little bit movement on this. You all should have my contact information from submitting a request here, so I really hope to hear sort of next steps as to where to go from there. So, thank you.
Amy Eugene?
Over 50 years ago, on the playground of the old Coventry School, I first began learning about racism and I continue to stand up and speak out as a fervent anti-racist. I'm about to make some comments about our mayor, based on data, behaviors, and patterns that I personally have heard, seen, and witnessed since December of last year. And I hold with great responsibility the weight of my words. Mayor, you are a brilliant, book-smart, lean Six Sigma, long-game chess-playing individual, truly talented, and your leadership and decision-making have faltered and are faltering. Under your watch, the city is hemorrhaging talent and with it goes knowledge, trust, and our tax dollars. Your lack of professionalism and lack of financial acumen during the budget process continues. During those five months, you stonewalled this city and its residents from passing a complete and timely budget. You did that. At the recent Finance Committee meeting, you stonewalled this city and its residents from implementing a city composting program and an internship program for Heights High School students. And you have put council in yet another holding pattern like you did during the budget process. You did and are doing that. Paying for contracting services in full without the work having been completed demonstrates incompetence. You did that. Your use of the city's Facebook page to put our business out on the street was unprofessional. You did that. Your recent idea to create an HR department is mind-boggling that things had to get so bad before the wisdom came to you. You're a lean Six Sigma process guy. You should have seen that long before recent news. You faltered. The presence of your wife in situations here at City Hall is unethical and improper. Period. Cake for your birthday, flowers on Valentine's Day, okay. But here, an involved enough to be dubbed by city staff, quote-unquote, "the head of HR," puts this city at great risk. If we don't have enough people to run this city because they're not staying under your watch to the point that you need to run the city like a mom-and-pop shop, then it's time for you and your wife to step down. We need a mayor who is a leader, who is a visionary, who empowers others and builds lasting trust and provides not a facade, but greater transparency in addition to accountability. You once had and still have aspects of some of those, but today you are not that mayor. And I ask that you step down.
Drew Hertzig?
Drew Herzig.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Counselors, Mr. Mayor. There's been a lot of talk lately, obviously, about a climate of fear here at City Hall and concerns about retaliation. Well, I would like to report a case of retaliation that I'm sure you are all familiar with. Last year, in addressing the council, I said that I was afraid of retaliation because I've been a persistent critic of some of the actions of some of the counselors. I said that. At the next council meeting, the council turned down the mayor's appointment of me to the Mayor's Arts Council. Five of you voted against that. At that time, another council member said this seemed to be a vote of spite, not based on my qualifications or lack thereof. At the following meeting, I came and said, yes, your retaliation was successful. You caused me quite a lot of personal harm. And there was no outcry. There was no request to make an investigation. No counselor was asked to resign. There was none of that. It's fully documented. You are all witnesses there. It's on YouTube. It's not allegations. It's not rumors. It actually happened. You retaliated against me only because I'm a critic of some of your actions here. Is there a double standard? There seems to be a double standard here, and I just, it just... I have to say, I'm still afraid. You've still created a climate of fear here. I know you will retaliate again against me if you ever given the opportunity because there's no control. You have no control here. There's no sense of decency or fairness, or even a sense of irony at this point, you know? It's like, oh, my God, you know, retaliation at City Hall. We've got to investigate this. I stand before you as a victim of your retaliation, and I'm just wondering. Again, I have to say, have you at long last no sense of decency? Thank you.
Cindy Evans.
Cindy Evans, Grayton Road. What has been allowed by our city is a total disgrace. As a victim of workplace harassment, I sympathize with the City Hall employees, and I must beg out. It's never okay to harass people because they are on your payroll. Why should we believe the mayor and the law director when they claim they knew nothing about the hostile work environment at City Hall? We could clearly see that there is a problem. I have witnessed council members being harassed by another council member just because they refused to side with the mayor. I and other residents have also been verbally attacked when we complained at council meetings. And let's not forget the flyer that targeted certain council members by making fun of black dialect and referring to a councilman as an Oreo. And our mayor never spoke out against the racism. And yet, when he... And yet, he's quick to speak out against racism when it affects him. So my question is, are we going to allow the City Hall employees to continue to suffer from workplace violence? Or bullying, I'm sorry, at the hands of the mayor? My answer is no. Let's pick a new city leader. Thank you.
Barbara Sosnowski.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Sosnowski at North Hampton Road. And I also wish to express my disappointment and discouragement as I listened to the special meeting last week with the mayor and city council concerning two different manners, matters. One was the Burgess and Burgess contract, where there was endless obfuscating and disputing about a difference between what is a survey and what an interview is. And it was a certain display of semantics that didn't seem to find a resolution. And so I, as a citizen, did not understand, well, where are we going from here? And then I heard no clear understanding of the untenable workspace that I was hearing about, created by family of the mayor that was made known by Daniel Horrigan, his resignation, and it supposedly has affected other staff. This is unacceptable. And I am supporting both this council and the mayor as they seek resolution and they find answers. Because all of this transpires while city business should not meet as many potholes as I drove, driving around Severn Circle.
Karen Lash.
Karen Lash, Monticello Boulevard. Mayor, I have to hand it to you. You are truly adept at not answering a question, taking it somewhere else, and going on for about five minutes about it. I sat in last week's meeting, and you did not answer one question that was posed of you. Not one. And then I want to know, on what planet do you think it's appropriate or ethical to have your wife come to work with you, sit in on meetings, sit in on interviews, order employees around, and have your key card to walk around and have access to this entire building? On earth, I haven't found anyone who thinks that that's appropriate. I was amazed that you actually threw Mr. Harrington under the bus by lying to council and the city residents about what he said not being true. He would have been a terrific addition to this city administration. And I'm curious why you did not respond to his emails. The issues caused by your wife's actions have brought incredible shame to this city. Embarrassment, harassment, employees that are feeling very uncomfortable. One that had to be put on administrative leave because she didn't feel safe. This entire situation has become, as I just said, a huge embarrassment. And it has taken city time and resources regarding these issues that should have never happened. My closing statement is that November can't come soon enough.
Angel Fasolo.
Angel Fasolo, Edgehill Road. Since it came up tonight about the photograph and a resident who apparently shared a photograph of the mayor's wife with the city key card, I'd like to tell a little bit of backstory. I was here at the December 19th meeting. I was here at the December 18th meeting with this sign indicating to Mayor Sarin that he is the problem. I attended both of those meetings. I was sitting right over here. The place was packed, and the doorway was blocked with a number of employees and other people. The place was pretty crowded. And in the doorway at one point was a woman I didn't know, didn't think much of it, until she stood in front of a resident who I did not know, who was sitting next to me, sort of staring down the woman. I turned. I looked to see if there was anyone else in the room who could assist. It's not always easy to just interrupt a council meeting, except when I'm breathing. However, at that point, when I didn't get anyone's attention because I didn't interrupt the meeting, I did take a number of photos in that doorway. That was December 19th, 2024. I could have shared those pictures, and I did not. I sent it to a couple of people, asked, do you know who this is? Because I had no clue who it was. The same person still didn't know who it was, while Councilman Cobb, who for most of the time I've been following along, gave support to Mayor Sarin, time and time and time and time again, was speaking. But he dared cross Mayor Sarin. He was now the council's six. And the mayor's wife, who I still didn't know was the mayor's wife, was standing in the doorway, and I'm going to edit it for this, calling him an effing liar, an effing liar, an effing liar. And I sat right there as she stood there, and it was audible. And there was no call for decorum. I don't think Councilman Cobb is a liar. I don't think most people think he's a liar. You can side with him. You could disagree with him, but I don't think he's a liar. There's one person in the room I do think is. And that's you, Khalil Sarin. I'm done saying mayor. You should resign. And the reason I think you should resign, when people were talking about recalls, oh, it's not practical. I was one of the ones saying it's probably not practical, and hopefully we vote him out. I'm not a part of any committee. I'm not supporting any candidate. I never have. You can look it up. I think I've donated $100 to one person in my tenure in this city, and that's it. And they're not running. You should resign. And the reason is, if you resign, maybe we can bring back some of the people who left, who were quality people, possibly like a Dan Horrigan, who you picked but then suddenly couldn't respect enough.
James Bates.
My name is James Bates. I live on Grosvenor Road. I'm just going to start out by saying, I've lived in this area really forever. The Heights is like home to me. I grew up here. I moved back to Cleveland Heights from Lakewood five years ago. What I've seen over the last several months through the budget negotiations and all of that was very, very disturbing. And now these allegations, unfortunately, Mr. Sarin, it really brings pause. I've been watching these meetings for months, and I was compelled to get up off my butt tonight and come in here and address everybody here and anybody who's at home watching. And this is basically what I wanted to say. You know, I'm here today because, you know, I'm not happy to be here, right? I'm here because I'm a citizen, and I do care about this community, and I'm compelled to speak out. Like many of you, right, that I'm sure probably at some point, you know, supported the mayor, I didn't, not from the beginning. Four years ago, I voted for his opponent. I want that to be very clear. And I'm glad I made that vote because now we see where we are today. The allegations against Mayor Sarin are not trivial. They are serious. They are disturbing, and they are corrosive to the trust that we as citizens place in those elected to lead. Whether they involve abuse of power, ethical misconduct, or a failure to live up to the standards of public service, they demand not just answers, but consequences. This is not about politics. It's not about party. This is about integrity. Leadership is not just about policies passed or speeches made. It's about character. It's about setting a standard that inspires confidence. And this community, Mr. Mayor, has lost confidence in you. It's about doing things right by the citizens. We cannot pretend that damage hasn't been done. The longer that you remain in office under this cloud of controversy, the more our city suffers. Our community deserves better. We deserve leadership that is beyond reproach, that lifts us up instead of dragging us through the mud of scandal. Mayor Sarin, if you truly care for Cleveland Heights, if you value the ideals that you once claimed to represent, then you know what the right thing to do is. Step aside. Let our city heal. Let us move forward with transparency, with hope, and with leadership we can trust. Now, I don't know if you're going to run for reelection. I'd love to ask you that question tonight. But if there's a petition circulating, I sure as hell ain't signing it. And I can tell you this. A change is coming to Cleveland Heights, and I hope to see it real soon.
Robin Coslin.
Hello. Am I speaking in the mic? Okay. Robin Coslin, Wood Road, Cleveland Heights. Nice to see you all. As an aside, or maybe not, my children think I'm one of the cheapest people they've ever met. And that's because... And I have been critical of the city for wastes of money here and there. $24,000 for this consultant or this to investigate this. But I'm actually advocating strongly that right now, there needs to be an independent investigation of workplace safety issues in our city. That this cannot be done by the mayor's committee. This needs to be an independent investigation. It needs to be swiftly done, and the communication back to the citizens should be done immediately. Thank you very much.
And last but certainly not least, James Williams.
Hello, counsel. James Williams, Cleveland Heights City, 25th, Seventh Circle. So tonight, I guess it'll be the chopping block. And when I say chopping, it's referring to quitting, stopping, and, you know, just not doing what you're doing. That's what Dan Horrigan did. I came here, and I wanted to get questions and answers about the Jalen Walker incident. And because I'm a black African-American, and that's all we see on TV. That's all we have been seeing for over 10 years now. Since 1964, Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X passing away, black men getting killed, and nobody's taking accountability for it. He chopped himself. He was chopped. He left. He didn't come back. He didn't answer any emails. He didn't even have the decency to answer or acknowledge any of that. Instead, he went to the media and attacked the mayor, along with Jim Petrus and the rest of whoever else is on the council. I feel as though that is what the city wanted because that's, we elected the mayor. And instead of the Charter Review Commission making revisions, we wanted a strong mayor. We got a strong mayor. He's been doing his job. He's been doing the best he can. He's been on council for years. He's our first elected mayor. So when it comes to, when I've noticed during council meetings in the back office, is that the main problem, which many cities across the nation has been having the same issue when they are moving from a city management type of government into a mayor government. There is all over the Westlaw LexisNexis cases, where you can look them up, where they have been having the same issues of the mayor gets so many votes, and we don't want the mayor's votes. We want our votes. And then, you know, he has the ultimate decision of the votes that the persons that he's electing or sitting on council or on the different departments. So it's not the mayor. It's the city itself and the Charter Review that needs to be revised and needs to be looked at. Other than that, again, he chopped himself. He quit.
That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you all for coming tonight and speaking out. Sorry, I've lost my place here. So we're going to go into first readings for consideration of legislation. Addie, could you...
Yes.
Just consideration for adoption.
First, I have Resolution Number 048-2025 on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an extension of an agreement with Millennium Strategies LLC for continued grant writing services and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Your discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, just a little bit. I just wanted to say thank you, counsel, for considering this. I think that we hadn't really thought to work on the revenue side of certain things in a more comprehensive way before this form of government took shape. But I think it's important for us to concentrate and have a comprehensive strategy for increasing our revenue while we attempt to cut costs where we can or find efficiencies where we can. Millennium Strategies has been a major part of our success in getting certain things funded. I think that there's only better as we continue to incorporate them into our practice here in Cleveland Heights. So I urge all of you to vote for this. I think that Millennium has been good for Cleveland Heights. I think they've more than paid for themselves over the time that we've been working with them. And I look forward to an expanded set of services in the future and an expanded relationship with them. And I look forward to an expanded set of services in the future and an expanded relationship with them in the future. So again, thank you for considering it, and I urge passage.
All right. And that's what we're going to do right now. We're going to, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just wanted to quickly note that I think that this is a really good partnership. Last year alone, for the cost of about $75,000, they secured $2.3 million in grants for the city. So I look forward to voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Definitely worth it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 049-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an extension of an agreement with Gridx LLC for continued public-facing zoning software and services, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I've got a little bit of that too. So this is another one of the initiatives that we've sort of taken on in this new government. I am extremely pleased, and I would like for everybody to take a look, if you can, at the Gridx software for Cleveland Heights. You can find it at, let's see, map.gridx.com, and then do a search for Cleveland Heights. This software is phenomenal. You can get a visual representation of all of our zoning areas on this zoning map. For one, it's in GIS format. You can, you know, zoom in. But then you additionally have the ability to zoom in on both the double A residential or single A residential areas of our city and take a look at what the requirements are for those zoning areas. You can even look at a specific parcel and get some information about what the requirements are for that parcel. This is something that not only has benefit to all of us curious residents, but it has a great deal of benefit for developers who may want to take a look at what is possible on a given property before they invest money in studying a particular business or development on that property. This is something that we put in place. It's been useful already in working with developers. And so I'm hoping that as we start a larger conversation, I know Director Zanft already alluded to this about zoning. We know that if we continue our traditional exclusionary zoning policies here in the city of Cleveland Heights, we will continue to fall behind. We will continue to turn developers away at the door. We will continue to stagnate instead of grow. And so I think this is just a tool, but it's a tool in service to growth and development and progress and evolution in Cleveland Heights. And so again, it's been extremely useful already. I think it will be even more useful as we consider how our zoning inhibits our growth and our development in Cleveland Heights as we continue to make changes. And hopefully, everybody can digest those changes in the city of Cleveland Heights. I know change can be difficult for people to deal with, to manage. But this is one of those things that shows that we can do better in Cleveland Heights and we can be more inviting to developers and business in Cleveland Heights and more welcoming to growth in Cleveland Heights. So again, I urge passage. I think it's a wonderful tool.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, it's a pretty long address here, but map.gridx.com is the basic, but it's probably easier if you just do a search for Gridx Cleveland Heights, and the first link will show you map.gridx.com, and you can go to that link for Cleveland Heights in order to get access to all of this wonderful zoning data.
All right. Did we have a motion or a second? I'm sorry. I lost track. All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 050-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an extension to a professional services agreement with SafeBill Ohio LLC, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved?
Second.
All right. As far as discussion goes, I just want to say that I'm glad this is kind of like, we're kind of, you know, coming to the end of the SafeBill era. This is just for plumbing work and plumbing inspection work. And we have been hiring full-time inspectors and moving away from the privatizing of inspections. So I'm happy for that. Any other discussion? Oh, there we go.
Yes. Quickly, you know, when we began this process, our first step was to remove SafeBill from those point-of-sale housing inspections. And that was an immediate concern and an immediate priority of the administration when I took office. We were able to accomplish that. We weren't entirely sure if we were going to be able to pull back and constrict the contract that we have with SafeBill for our, you know, building and permitting services. But with the addition of Eric Elmy, who comes to us from the City of Cleveland Building Department, we have taken on that challenge. And I think we've been surprisingly successful, given the market for building commissioners and the type of building inspectors and permit texts and those sorts of inspectors that we would need to fill out that building and permitting division in our planning neighborhoods and development department. This is a success. I think we should all be proud of that. I appreciate all that council has done to contribute to the growth of that department and this division in particular. We really didn't know when we started this if it would be successful or not, if we would be able to recruit and retain, you know, a talented individual like Mr. Elmy. But it's working out, and I look forward to the next steps. This is a constriction of that contract. But our next steps are to take a look at our regional environment, our regional municipal environment, so that we can potentially work with other cities to fill the gaps that all of us have. And then maybe we can further constrict this contract and not, you know, that we will never have an opportunity or a need for outsourced services. If it becomes necessary, we can take advantage of it. But in this case, I think we're looking for more municipally-run building permitting and inspections. And so again, I urge you to pass this so that we can maintain that level of service, but with the understanding that we are going to continue to attempt to bring this back in-house, either here locally in Cleveland Heights or through collaboration with our neighbors. So thank you.
All right. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 051-2025 on first reading. A resolution amending and adopting the city of Cleveland Heights' support for the ideals, principles, and concepts of Vision Zero, affirming that the acceptable number of annual traffic deaths is zero, and establishing the goal of achieving zero annual traffic fatalities in the city by 2030, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? There we go. Councilwoman Larson?
I'd just like to say that this particular update on the Vision Zero plan for the city makes a lot of sense. I'm hoping that we, what it does, it extends the year that we come into compliance where we have zero fatalities on our streets. And that's really, was really important to former Councilwoman Mary Dunbar, and it's extremely important to all of us now. So we, the legislation extends that compliance date to 2030. I hope we certainly can meet that long before then. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 052-2025 on first reading. A resolution appointing Natalie Davis as the alternate member of the Fair Practices Board to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term, setting the unexpired term of office of the alternate member to end December 31st, 2027, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordnance Number 053-2025 on first reading. An ordinance amending Section 1 of Ordnance 127, 2024, our Wage and Salary Ordinance to adjust the pay scales and modify job titles of certain seasonal positions within the Department of Parks and Recreation, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Larson, and then, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I absolutely feel this is necessary. We need to bring our seasonal workers up to a fair wage and a competitive wage. So hopefully, we'll have all the slots filled for all the work that needs to be done at the pool and all around the city. Thank you.
Here, here. Councilwoman Posh?
I need to recuse myself in this vote because of a family member that would benefit from this legislation.
All right. Any other comments?
Am I raising a hand? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll do it.
All right. I'll raise your hand. No, go ahead.
I just want to say I am very pleased to know that our seasonal workers are coming up to par. As you know, I've been talking about this for many years now, so I'm glad to see some movement here. And congratulations on all who will benefit on behalf of this legislation and the seasonal work and wage and salary ordinance. Thank you.
It is wonderful. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion passes. Now we're on to first readings only.
All right. We've got two on first reading only. I've got Resolution Number 054-2025 on first reading. An ordinance amending Section 121.01 Powers and Duties of Chapter 121, Mayor of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, introduced by President Kuta. I also have Ordnance Number 055-2025 on first reading. An ordinance amending various sections of Part 11 zoning code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights as part of the Livable Neighborhoods Initiative, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right. And being that it's a new version of this legislation, I'm referring 055 to the Planning Commission. Second readings.
I have Resolution Number 036-2025 on second reading. A resolution adopting the city of Cleveland Heights Comprehensive and Equitable Safety Action Plan introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Any discussion or comments? All right. Well, we did talk about this in Committee of the Whole. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And fourth readings.
I have Ordnance Number 245-2024 on fourth reading, amended 4/7/2025. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Cleveland Heights to rezone the Park Synagogue property located at 3300 Mayfield Road to S2 mixed-use district and transmitting the same to the Planning Commission introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Councilman Petrus?
Thank you, Mr. President. No project is perfect. That is true for this project. I heard the concerns raised by some neighbors in the area, and I appreciate that those folks raised those concerns. But all things considered, on balance, I think that this will be a good project for the city, and I look forward to voting for it.
All right. Any other comments? I'm going to make one on this one. I know as to zoning is for mixed use, and I know that not everybody who lives on Compton is for this. We've been assured, and the legislation assures, that everything that happens after this is going to be on a case-by-case basis. I don't want it to be misconstrued, at least for myself, that I'm at this place where anything goes, you know? I'm going to look at every project, one by one, as they come forward in a development agreement, and make judgments on that individual merit. So, but I am going to support this. The Planning Department supports it. It went through the proper channels. It could bring some great things. I love the idea of using the dome for the graduate students or postgraduate students from Oberlin and bringing more arts into Cleveland Heights. And that's my comment. Any others? All right. All in, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Cobb?
Aye.
Kuta?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
All right. We're going to move on to committee reports. Who goes first? Or should I say who goes at all? Okay. Councilman Posh?
About that, we have two Safety Committee meetings scheduled for this month. The first one is on April 22nd, 25. It's at 5:00 PM. We have an agenda that'll be coming out shortly about that. The more important one is a public hearing regarding our dear population. That is on April 29th, between 6:00 and 8:00. It is a Tuesday evening in these council chambers.
All right. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Councilwoman Larson?
The Finance Committee met April 2nd. Frank Icke, the CPA counsel hired to review the city's financials, gave us some great suggestions, monitoring financial statements going forward, requesting updates on the still incomplete, still incomplete state audit of 2023 and the administration's intentions regarding new financial software. I'll be incorporating those ideas into future agendas for this committee. Excuse me. I will be asking for periodic updates on all the 2025 capital projects, including Dennison Splashpad. It was funded in 2023. Delivered parts are sitting at the RREC Center. It needs to be installed as soon as the infrastructure is done this year. We also discussed council's request for amending the 2025 budget. These requests include the following. President Kuta is requesting $10,000 for a council internship program. His request was submitted to Director Harrison with a CC to the mayor. I am requesting $38,160 for a two-location composting program. My request was submitted to Director Harrison with a CC to the mayor. Councilors Posh and Petrus are requesting $2 million to $3.7 million be added to the 2025 budget for street resurfacing. This remains a work in progress and will probably generate further discussion. Councilor Cobb is requesting $2,500 for the Heights Tiger 5K and Fun Run, as well as $7,500 for the Heights Music Hop. Councilor Petrus is requesting $4,500 for the Happy 5K. We were advised by the mayor that these requests will need to be separate pieces of legislation. Additionally, the mayor told council members that the process used in 2023, when we amended the 2024 budget, when Andy Unetic was Finance Director, will not apply for these amendments to the 2025 budget because, per the mayor, quote, "The last six months have changed how it all will work," unquote. Current status of council requests? Each request requires certification from Director Harrison that the funds are available. I totally understand that. The above listed requests are on hold. We are waiting the process for making our requests as designed by the mayor and Finance Director Harrison. The next Finance Committee meeting is April 28th at 6:00 PM. Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee, excuse me. On March 18th, the committee met. Catalina Wagers, Chair of the Environmental Sustainability Citizen Committee, presented the committee's annual report. Sustainability Coordinator Bo Tang attended the meeting as well. I attend monthly meetings of the Transportation and Mobility Committee and the Environmental Sustainability Citizen Committee. The Transportation Mobility Committee is reviewing the original legislation that established complete and green streets. They are requesting complete and green streets policies be applied to annual resurfacing projects. That's all I have to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other committee reports? Yes, please. Vice President Russell?
Yes, I have a committee report. April 3rd, the Planning and Development Committee had a merchants' meeting with the Noble residents, I mean, the Noble merchants, at 10:30. It was very successful. It was the third meeting we had. We are now on a way to creating a merchants' association for the Noble Business District. I was able to obtain $10,000 from the county's upper funds to get them started, some seed money. They are also looking for any lawyers in Cleveland Heights who wants to do any promo bono work. Please contact me. They need someone to help them create a 501(c)(3). And they have also voted for Myra, what's her last name? Orstein, to help them create this 501(c)(3) and the Noble Merchants Alliance. So the next one we will be talking with will be the Taylor Road, trying to get them a merchants' association as well. The next meeting will be April 23rd at 10:00 AM. This will be our developers' meeting, where we bring all developers together to talk about zoning, housing, and vacant lots, and what we can do to create new homes and development in Cleveland Heights. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. I just want to put on everyone's radar, Caldonia Elementary School, groundbreaking for their new playground, will take place on May 1st at Caldonia Elementary School at 12:00 PM. I will also be conducting a pathway to home ownership on May 3rd, and you'll find out more information on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Russell. Councilwoman-
Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to briefly share that during our last meeting, the Housing and Building Committee agreed to request that the Law Department draft legislation that would require information to be provided to people who are cited for housing violations about assistance programs that they may be eligible for. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is next Monday, April 14th at 5:30 PM. Assistant Director Butler is going to overview his department's progress on this year's systematic inspections. And finally, on April, on Tuesday, April 22nd at 6:00 PM, we are going to have a public hearing in this room about commercial vehicles in residential areas. A resident came to us asking that we look into that issue. We are going to ask that folks provide comment on there being no restrictions on commercial vehicles on residential areas, there being many restrictions and some middle ground. And this isn't an indication of any particular legislation that we're considering. Again, this is a public hearing so that we can hear what residents' thoughts are on that. And with that, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other committee reports? All right, we're on to council comments. I'm no, I'm sorry, we're on to old business. That's where we are. Old business. Councilwoman Larson.
First of all, I want to apologize to my council colleagues and the citizens of Cleveland Heights for not speaking up enough at the April 2nd Council Committee of the Whole. I did say on April 2nd that I am worried for the safety of the employees of the City of Cleveland Heights, and I did ask the mayor of council if council would be privy to the results of the third-party investigation into a recent employee complaint of workplace harassment. He said the results would be made public. This is what I should have added to the discussion. I observed the inappropriate behavior of the mayor's wife, Natalie McDaniel, at the December 19th council meeting. This inappropriate behavior started when a woman later identified to me as the mayor's wife, Natalie McDaniel, came down, came into council chambers after public comment and stood purposefully staring down a citizen who had spoken during public comment in support of council's actions on the budget. Then Ms. McDaniel moved over by the podium where the law director and the mayor sit. She mouthed foul language when Councilor Cobb was speaking in support of a temporary budget, and no one stopped her. Her behavior towards a Cleveland Heights resident and toward a member of council was threatening and unprofessional and disturbing. I have grown increasingly concerned for the safety of our staff as we are hearing that Ms. McDaniel is a constant presence in City Hall and is the subject of a harassment complaint now under investigation. Our employees deserve to come to work, unafraid and confident they can do their jobs without worrying about a non-employee confronting them. This has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other old business? Oh, you'd, go ahead, please.
Yes, I just want to give an update that I did make a public records request for emails. I did receive that public request, but I got, it came in 7,000 pieces of paper with two emails on each sheet. So I will be asking the city to print them or to send them to me in the proper format according to law. Thank you.
All right. Under old business, and this is going to sound just a little bit defensive, but people are worried, you know, that we're not doing, you know, we're distracted and so forth. You know, the Oregon resignation and the allegations that followed, obviously, are deeply concerning, not just to myself but to some other members of council. But I want residents to know that the council in general, and myself in particular, are working on issues that residents care about, not just the city administrator's resignation. Myself and other members of council have suggested putting more money towards staffing and road repair and resurfacing. Actually, me going back two years on that particular issue, remember, council funds the road repairs, but the administration is the one that executes those repairs. Tomorrow, the mayor and I are going to talk about improving the budget process. I put forth a four-page plan to improve it. The mayor and I are going to work on it. We're going to present it to council and hopefully get a better process together for the 2026 budget. I'm pushing the administration to get started on the ARPA-funded exterior repair program for homeowners. I've been asking about this for a long time. I worked on it in 20, geez, I have to think, 2023. I was putting this together with the Home Resource Repair Center Director, and it's really time to get that thing going. The Law Department has assured me that the short-term rental legislation, there was an article about this in the Sun Press last week. I sponsored that legislation well over a year ago. My part was completed. I'd love to see that on April 21st. And I consistently ask about when the elevators will be repaired that council allocated funds for well over a year ago. So, you know, we're, we gotta walk and chew gum and maybe balance a plate, but we're gonna, we're gonna fire on all cylinders the best we can, and so I just wanted to assure everybody of that. Now we'll move on to new business. Yes, please.
Just wanted to let the council know that I am working on smoke shop legislation that, number one, will limit the number in our city, and, number two, place some additional regulations and guidelines, as well as restrictions on existing businesses. I'm working with that, with the Law Department. As soon as I have something, I'll present that back to council.
Thank you. And we have gotten some emails about that, that there's, you know, like too much. Any other new? Yes.
Councilman Maddox, could you look into smoke shops around schools as well? Thank you.
All right, new business, please. Councilman Cobb.
Sure. Related to the issue of the smoke shop, I've heard rumors that another dispensary is looking at going in on Lee Road, and I, I hope this is going to be the last dispensary that we're going to have in this city. I think two is plenty for a city of this size.
I think there's three.
Is there?
Well, there's one in that upstairs apartment in Coventry, and then there's the cross, is that, am I wrong?
That's a vape shop.
Oh, that's a vape shop. Thank you. All right. Let me just get those mixed up. Any, any other new business? I do have one item. Law Director, please forgive me, because I don't know that, I may not even have the right, he's ducking, but council worked on some new business between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, and I could put it in a memo, but it might be helpful if you watch the first hour because it's all new business there. And Vice President Russell and I will probably be asking you about viability of the legislative proposals on Thursday when we meet, so I just kind of a heads up on that. Thank you. Any, any other new business? All right, we'll move on now to council member comments. Councilman Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things tonight. I have spoken to so many residents, both in person and in some of our, the Cleveland Heights neighborhood chat group, Engaged Heights group, Higher Heights group, just tons of groups, just having these conversations and this dialogue tonight about the importance of really making sure that any facts, that we're actually receiving facts about some of the things that have transpired, some of the things that we're hearing, and some of the things that we talked about in terms of emails and private conversations that people have had. And I wanted to say this tonight, and I think it's important that we say, I've heard several times the word allegation tonight. At the same time, I've also heard the word resignation. I would question anyone's character and integrity that would tell you that someone should resign before you even have facts, but they're willing to accept whatever someone else says without any proof and any names. The accountability is for all, but when you have people demanding that someone quit or resign, and at the same time calling something an allegation, that's a red flag for me. Nothing has been proven, no information is coming out, but yet we have people in our community who are hell-bent on telling the mayor to go ahead and resign at the same time we're asking for more facts. It's extremely hypocritical to do something like that, when at the same time, we called the mayor's investigation on council a lawsuit, when he thought they had an illegal meeting. And I say "they" because I wasn't in it, and there was a full agenda shown. We refused to even spend the money to look into that, but now we're saying this man should resign even before there is any type of investigation and any facts that are produced from that. It's extremely dangerous and hypocritical to have one set of rules for council and another set for the mayor. I would encourage anyone to go ahead and research the facts in what's happening. Wait for any investigation to come out and the results of that investigation, and ask yourself why people in the public are demanding this man's resignation with no facts in the middle of an investigation, but we refuse to even look into illegal meetings that this council had with a full agenda in an email. That's just, what's fair is what's fair, and what's right is what's right. I didn't see a single person come in here in March and demand that this council resign, not as a person or as a whole, but I've seen multiple people come in here tonight and demand that of this mayor. This council had a full-blown agenda, several members of this council, who are telling you that they're appalled at how this city is operating tonight, but there's been zero accountability, change, or structure. There's been zero protections in terms of making sure that these meetings don't continue to happen. There's been no conversation about how we will move forward. Yet I've had, I've crickets, it's been crickets in this city about that. And so I just want this city to make sure that we understand that there should be an even playing field for everyone that you elect. There shouldn't be a separate rule for the mayor as there is for council. Accountability is for all. Thank you.
All right, any other, where are we? Council comments. Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. In recent weeks, we all have seen allegations in the local media about City Hall's operations. Council discussed them last week, and we continue those discussions tonight. I'd like to take a moment to comment on a few of them. Firstly, an employee reported on or around March 13th that they felt unsafe in the workplace. This employee received permission to work from a different building. On or around March 27th, the mayor, the mayor directly himself, placed this employee on administrative leave pending the outcome of an investigation. I remain deeply concerned about this because on its surface, it appears that this could have been an act of retaliation. Next, on October 26th, the mayor signed a contract with Burgess &amp; Burgess, a political consulting agency, to conduct a survey of employees and residents. This contract was for $48,000, which happens to be just below the $50,000 threshold where council approval would be needed. While the mayor shared last week that the scope was changed to remove the resident survey, the Law Department confirmed that no amendments have been made to the contract. Finally, numerous complaints have been submitted to HR about egregious and repeated misconduct allegations at Kane Park. The city engaged Clemens Nelson to investigate the allegations. I thank the Law Director for pledging to provide the Clemens Nelson report to City Council. We should strive to make the City of Cleveland Heights employer of choice. The City of Cleveland Heights should have a workplace culture where employees want to come to work, where they feel valued and want to go the extra mile. Employees should not be on pins and needles, which is what numerous current and former employees have told me over the last two weeks. We owe it to the employees and the residents to do everything within our power to right this ship. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Oh, please, Vice President Russell.
Yes, I just want to say that most of you know my background is labor, and I've been fighting for employees and workers for over 40 years, and I will not stop now. And I am not going to divulge who has contacted me, because I know the retaliation that could be on an employee, because I've lived it. I know it, and I know it happens. And if people are confiding in us regarding what's going on, and they refuse and ask you not to disclose their names, then I am going to abide by that. So you can believe me, if you choose, that people are saying and implying that things are happening here in City Hall. I'm not asking you to believe me, but I'm stating what people have said and what people are constantly saying. So my job is, as a council person, is to be very passionate about that. I remember one gentleman come in here and said, "Why is council being very mean to staff?" And I've never known a council person to be mean to staff. I don't know about it. No one's told me about it, and I've never been mean to anyone in this, in City Hall, period. But I do know for a fact, a employee was removed from City Hall from talking to me in the atrium, and was forbidden to come back to City Hall. I know that for a fact. So when you talk about workplace violence, or workplace impriorities, or workplace uncomfortable, people being uncomfortable in the workplace, all of these things are very possible in a workplace. All these things are very possible in a workplace. And I, how can I deny 10 or 15 people telling me the same thing? How can I deny when people are saying, "Oh, staff is telling people to erase things or delete things or remove things"? How can I deny people are telling me? Why would someone come to me and tell me that? What reason would they have? What reason would anyone come and tell me that they've been cussed out? What reason would anyone have to tell me that things, these things are happening? For what, what reason? What purpose? And why wouldn't I believe them? I'm going to stand up for workers until the day I die. So whoever wants to believe what I've said, so be it. If you don't, that's your prerogative as well. But things are possible, and things do happen in a workplace that people have no idea what happens in a workplace.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
All right, President's Report. So a lot of people, you know, did come up and say a lot of things tonight, and sometimes it's just patterns, preponderance of evidence kind of thing that sway people. But we're not the administration. Some people say, "Why don't you do this, you know, by as a council, to stop, you know, people from coming into the, with, you know, credentials that don't belong to them and so forth"? That's, that's not our job. I mean, what we did at our meeting at 5:00 o'clock today, that was our job. You know, we're looking at problems, we're trying to come up with legislative solutions. March 19th, I'm sorry, December 19th meeting was brought up tonight a few times. I too witnessed the mayor's wife mouthing very demonstratively, right there, right where I'm pointing, while Councilman Cobb was talking, "F-ing liar, f-ing liar." I mean, real big motion. You, you could not mistake it for what she was saying. I was sitting here listening when the mayor called us stupid, ignorant liars, called people who came up to the microphone sycophants if they supported us. I mean, I, it's not okay. It, 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 this is a toxic environment. I felt like I was in a toxic environment that night. It, it was just, and, and the problem is, nobody ever says, "Oh, my God, I'm sorry", you know, like I, I lost my head that night or something, you know? I mean, that kind of stuff happens. But when I hear from people I don't know who used to work here or who work here now and don't know each other, and they're all telling these kind of stories, okay, maybe it's not conclusive, maybe it's not 100% conclusive, but when the mayor says those things and nobody says this isn't okay, like nobody in the admin, this is not okay, then you start to think, when you hear the stories from the other people, well, maybe this goes on. I mean, it's, it's, it's not an illogical conclusion if you don't, if you don't say it's wrong and you don't think it's wrong and you're doing stuff like that, that maybe this is the atmosphere. And I think that's why we had the discussion today about having an independent investigation about the climate here, not just about one incident. So I'm sorry that we're going through this. It's very uncomfortable to talk about. You know, we do have a lot of work to do, and we will continue to do that work, but we're, we cannot turn our back at this point on, on the things that we do know. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.